For too long, the black vote has been treated like a given. But we're not property, we're not pawn. We are the descendants of those who built this nation. And now, we're demanding tangibles, not tokenism. Because the era of blind loyalty is over. This is the Black Independent. Let's get to work.
All right.
Good morning.
Let us get to work. Hey Mona.
Good morning. Hello.
I'm doing really well. So, so hey y'all. I'm Jeanette Bradley, artist, education advocate, coming to you from Tampa, Florida. And my co-host today is Mona Judge, entrepreneur, community connector, and somebody who's always got her ear on the ground here in Tampa. She knows what's happening. She knows what's going on. So we're both proud to be part of this Black Independent movement. It's a space for folks who are ready to rethink how we show up in politics and who we show up for. That's important. This isn't just about party lines. It's about real power. It's about real issues that affect, that affect us. And it's a real, it's about real talk. So today, we're gonna jump right in to just that. So Mona, we talked a little bit earlier, but we got a district city council seat about to come open. Well, it is open.
It is open. It's in full swing. I think we have 12 candidates that has shown interest. Qualifying, we don't know who qualify. I don't think all 12 will qualify. And that's.
What does it, what does it take for the 12 to qualify? Because you're right, I've got the supervisor of elections site up. On, so you're right, there's 12 folks that have put their hat in the ring. What does it take? What does it take to qualify?
So it either takes can a fee. And that fee is like 4,000, let's just say 5,000, because I can't remember off the top of my head. It's 4,000 and something. Or you could go out and get petitions and try to get 1,100 petitions from people who live in that district. And you go qualify that way. So you will qualify either that way. Most people will pay because it's not enough time to try to qualify by petition. Now, it could be done, because you, you know, you could get, you got a good support group. It's a few people in that race who can qualify by petitions. And that will indicate to me that they are a strong contender.
Because they're already, they already have a team and they, that have boots on the ground.
Yes.
How long, how long does it take? Well, when's the deadline actually for getting that petition in?
Uh, I get it right now. Um, so here's the, the current schedule. August 11th, just in case, we still trying to get voter registration. So voter registration close August 11th. So no kid really, and no responsible parent should have let their kid become 18 and not register, right? But if someone happens to become 18, you should be registered before you get out of high school. And that's how we have to move forward now. So.
It should be automatic, just saying.
It definitely should, but you know, of course, the Republican Party doesn't want that. And even like mail-in ballots. I used to always do mine. I used to always receive a mail-in ballot. But of course, I like to go and do it in person. But I, I do the mail-in ballot just to review the ballot, really, to see what's on it.
Yeah.
From August 11th through the 15, candidates at that time will start qualifying. So you have from August 11th to August 15th, the candidates have up until that time to qualify. So that means.
That's a little less than a month. That's a little less than a month.
Yes. So that means they're gonna either go down to the supervisor of elections and pay, or they have turned in, you know, 1,100 of those ballots have cleared. Now, what we've learned, because I've worked on ballots initiative, they kick them out. So you have to do them just as the papers say, right? Most people don't date it. Some people don't sign it. Or you have to put your name, fill it out as it appears on your voter registration card. And even like me sometimes. Now, my name is Celeste Judge Johnson. Half the times, I don't know how my voter registration, because I go by Mona Judge or whatever. So I have to look it up to make sure, or I pull out my card, because I keep my card with me. So. And, but my driver's license still say Celeste Judge Johnson. So.
Yeah, I think, I think we really need to understand how important it is that when we complete paperwork that has to do with voting, everything depends on it.
Yes, we have to update it. You know what? I even changed my signature, because my signature was still the signature. Now, one time, I go in and the lady says, oh. Well, I went to a precinct that I usually don't go to, because when you go to the precincts that you go to, the people know you. You've been going there forever. It's always the same people. Everybody knows everybody, right? And she says, well, this doesn't look like your signature. I said, yeah, well, that's 18 years ago. This is my signature. Now, like, let's not do this.
Oh, my God.
And, you know, I was at the, I was on South Dammagory. We was at that canvassing, so I just went in there. And, you know, but, you know, I did end up doing it. And I, and I looked at it and I said, okay, well, let me go in and change my signature. And I did. So we have to be responsible and mature about this situation. We have to be able to move whenever these people want to change the.
Exactly.
The goal code. And we know these things are happening, so why not update it? If you have moved, you got to.
Just do it. Yeah.
It takes very long time. And you used to be able to do it online. Now, you can't do any of this stuff online anymore.
The only thing you can do, for the most part, is download a PDF. You fill it out, then you can mail it in, but you also can take it in. But you can't just push the button and be done with it. I know, because I changed from Democrat to independent recently and got this unpleasant surprise that I, there was another step I had to take. And I think that that, even me, I felt like, well, dog. Why is this, why do I have to take this extra step? I didn't have to do this before.
It's to deter you from doing it. And it means to, um, because they know most people, whether they're black or white, they're lazy. And, and they want you to say, oh, it's not that important.
That's, that's exactly it.
Understand the urgent of the situation.
Right.
Right? And, and everyone has to. And, and I say to people, like, like in my family, I don't know how I became the, the political person in the family. I, I am the one who makes sure that everyone voter stuff is up to par. And even sometimes I go in and check it myself, you know?
Yeah.
Yes, you can. Yeah, I go and that's one of my nephews. Hey, I need you to do this, this and this. And, you know, generally, they get, I, they get a call from you, they're gonna do it.
I think that practice is important, that if you have maybe a matriarch or somebody who's politically astute within your family, assign somebody who goes and looks up everybody in the family to see, you know, if everything is up to date. We've done that here in this household, but we've also done it with my brothers and sisters just to make sure that everything is up to date for them. But in their families, they can also do that as well. And I think that probably is one of those things we should be doing. We're not out there protesting, but there are things we can be doing that make sure that we are represented in this next election.
Yeah, particularly with the mail-in ballots, when we have, you know, like my mother, my, all of my aunts, and who are looking for those mail-in ballots to come in. So I will send out a mass email to my cousins to let them know the mail-in ballot is not coming. You have to request it. So go. And they're, and they're pretty good with that. Because, you know, they're conscious. We can't complain when we're not being part of the process.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we typically have not paid attention to the rules. And we have to be proactive, as you say, about going on the site. The information is there. Go get it.
And it's very easy. Yeah. So listen. August 28th is the last day we could request a mail-in, a mail-in ballot. Because the election, early voting starts September the 4th through the 7th. So we need to really be pushing that. August 28th is the last day that you could request a mail-in ballot. Now, if you happen to miss that day, that just means you have to go and vote in person. But if you have a senior who might be difficult moving, then let's request the mail-in ballot.
Yeah, I think we need to, definitely need to. So to you folks out there, this, we have an election that's coming up September 9th for the Tampa City Council District 5. It's typically a black seat. But as demographics change and folks are shifting into East Tampa, other folks are shifting into East Tampa, but also the boundaries are expanding where now you have Ebor and you have Channelside. And I think a little further north than usual, East Tampa encompasses a really large area that has a lot of different people in it.
So what I think people sometimes forget, this election isn't really about East Tampa, because we're from East Tampa and we think East Tampa. But District 5, District 5 is large.
It is.
We think East Tampa is the heart of District 5. And I, I like to believe it is. But you know, you have West Tampa, you have Carver City, you, you got Suffer Springs. You have, um, part of Progress Village, Progress Village all along that end. You have down, I can't think of the school down, down.
Down, down.
It's, it's a lot of mostly Mexicans in that area.
Okay.
But people often forget about that. So candidates.
It doesn't go as far, does it go as far as Y-Mama? No.
No. Um, I can't think of it. I can't think of it. I had, I had.
Goodington.
No, no.
I'm just looking at that area.
Yeah, it's a small little area, mostly migrants. It was a school there. I can't think of it, but.
There's Ipoito. Ipoito is, is, is high Hispanic. All right. So anyway, East Tampa is way larger than, than just, I guess, no, District 5 is much larger than East Tampa. And we need to keep that into consideration, that it's not necessarily gonna be a black person.
East Tampa is in District 5. And East Tampa might be the heart of District 5. It has always been the heart of District 5. You know, and they're trying to change it a little, but we have to fight to make sure it stays that way.
Right, but East Tampa is also beginning to become gentrified.
Oh, yes, yes.
So you've got that, you've got to consider that as well.
Absolutely, because when, you know, when they're doing the drawing in the district and, and the district. I don't know why we would have wanted, District 5 would have wanted to be included in downtown Tampa, Channelside and all of that. Because you know the majority of the people who's gonna be there. All right, now it's tens of thousands of people there that would change that directory in, in really in about five years. This won't really necessarily be a black seat.
Yeah, it, it won't. And there are some white candidates in, in this list of 12. Let's talk a little bit about who's there. I don't really know who the candidates are. I am seeing some ads or some little podcasters talking about the various candidates. But I think it's gonna be really, really important that we make sure we're talking about who's running. I do not have a dog in the fight at this time. I am considering some that I've got questions to ask. But it's important that leadership in District 5, I was gonna say East Tampa, but leadership in District 5, they have to serve with integrity. They, and they have to keep the people first. And that's hard. It's getting harder and harder for, in my opinion, for political figures who represent the poor or the middle class, lower middle class, to actually keep them first. It's easy for somebody to keep rich folks first. They're, they're the ones controlling stuff, but I'm seeing too many neighborhoods being left behind.
Well, they have been left behind. I grew up in East Tampa. But I could say in the 60s and the 70s, East Tampa was a thriving community. We, and, and it was thriving only because everybody at that time was living in District 5. You know, we had very few people in the 70s living in white, in the suburbs, okay? So that means you had your doctors, lawyers, everybody living in District 5. So when that changed, East Tampa changed. Because, you know, we had everything, it looked good. Huh?
You had what you needed, yeah.
Yes, yes. And we had, you know, our upper class, middle class, working class, and the poor. And we all got alone. It, it was a, it was a happy childhood living in East Tampa. And some kind of way, by time, I really start noticing East Tampa going when Chevrolet dealership left Hillsborough.
Wow.
Firestones, when big companies start moving, Pizza Hut. We was, we had our first hair salon on Hillsborough in that shopping plaza. So we was, East Tampa was thriving. And I don't know why.
Wasn't, wasn't there a Publix there at one point?
Winn-Dixie, but Publix have always.
Winn-Dixie was there.
The Publix have always been where it's at now. So there's still a Publix there. Mostly in, in Seminole Heights, but it was always.
I thought there was one on Hillsborough.
It was one on Hillsborough, but a little west of Nebraska. West of Nebraska. So, yeah. And so, you know, we know now, in hindsight, it's, all this stuff was by design. And this is why I say, I was thinking, we can no longer go along with symbolism, right?
Ooh, that's a big word.
Because we, we, because black people was in politics, in positions, they had to be at the table, knowing what was going on and believing that this was good. For some kind of what, some kind of way, those people told our people, this is good to bring in different income. And that's what they kept telling us. We gotta bring in different income. Everybody in East Tampa is making, I think they were saying 40,000 or less. And I, and I call that bullshit. No. But when I see what they have brought into East Tampa, these people look like zombies. They walk in the streets, they own drugs. I don't see any, um, a lot of higher income white people coming to East Tampa. I, I, I know there are some, because they're buying $500,000 houses now in East Tampa. We got houses that cost that much money, you know? But that's only, let's say that's 10 of them. But the rest of the people that they're putting in East Tampa are, are not bringing East Tampa up. Because if you're driving around East Tampa and you see people walking, walking the streets, what do they look like to you?
Black people, white people, Hispanic people? What are you talking about? Huh?
White people. That's mostly who I see.
I, I guess I, I see on occasion somebody walking their dog or, or their baby or whatever. But I don't see that many. I can tell.
Well, I do, because I'm there every day.
Yeah, yeah, you do. I, I'm not there. When I get there in the mornings, it's like four, four o'clock in the morning.
Yes, and nobody, nobody's really up. I, I'm there every day, but I, and I'm like, where are these people coming from? I mean, and, and I do understand, like, a lot of investors have bought homes and they use them for rehab, and they send their undesirables to East Tampa.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm seeing walking the streets. You go up Hillsborough, the corner of 34th, 22nd, 40th Street, when I'm leaving work. So I'm just, and I'm always going the same way. I'm on 40th and Hillsborough. That's where I'm at the most of the time.
Yeah.
And, and it does something. So, yeah, it's, um, so the candidate, did you pull up their names?
Yeah, I do. I have them here, so.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know half of those people.
All right, so the first on the list is Adet Bruce. She doesn't, she filed, but she has no funding at this point. So zero contributions in kind or expenditures. So she may be one that maybe hangs in there or not. But you know what I said? Well, who the heck is Adet, Adet Bruce? And let me just read you this. This, this is an article that might have been in the Tampa Times. Yeah, it was Tampa Bay Times. Adet Bruce, a former policy analyst and speech writer for the United Nations. She is white, by the way. Moved to Florida more than a decade ago. She's worked for former state rep Jackie Toledo and Rep Bernie Jacks. Um, or Jaques. Taking her international, national and state level experience to Tampa, Bruce said she wants to focus on affordable housing. So, and other things, but I'm gonna just stop there. So she's somebody to watch, I think, in the forums that come up. I think what we're looking for someone, I think we're looking for someone with experience, relevant experience. And because we're talking more about East Tampa than we are about Channelside and the other areas, somebody who really sees East Tampa as an opportunity to advance East Tampa. Now, I didn't grow up in East Tampa. But I did, I come to visit my grandmother, who lived on 19th and, and I forget what other street, but we used to have to go, have to, listen to me. We used to have to go to my grandmother's house. Um, and, and we would walk then to Cascaden Pool to go swimming. But I'm a Progress Village person, so we would come into.
I think that's still District 5.
It is District 5. That's true. You did mention that earlier. But, um, so I have an affinity for East Tampa or District 5. And I'd like to see someone who really cares about the neighborhoods where I grew up and where I spent my weekends and, and visiting my grandparents. And a lot of my friends, when I went to Brandon High School, a lot of them came out of East Tampa.
Yes.
So yeah, she is definitely one of the candidates that, um, I guess we're gonna have to pay attention to and see where that goes. Now, you've got Tom Scott. Give me some thoughts on Tom Scott.
So Tom Scott is a prominent pastor in East Tampa. Been here, he was actually my grandmother's pastor and longtime family friend. And I've been knowing him, you know, most of my life. And he's also, now, he has experience, of course, because he's also set on.
County commission?
County commission and city council. He was a city council person first. He did two terms. And county commission, and he ran for mayor.
A lot of experience.
A lot of experience. So, but what I would say with him, and I don't know, with all due respect and I have much love for Thomas Scott. I, we used to go to his church. We would go to his church quite a bit with my grandmother, but definitely after she died, we would go every Mother's Day. So, but, you know, he, he feels that he, he, that the district needs him and he wants to run. My thing is, where I'm at now, I don't wanna really recycle. I don't wanna support a recycle. And I want somebody, although he will be able to hit the ground running. But, you know, I want somebody who I believe that's in good health. I don't know, old years.
You're assuming that age equates to not be good at all.
He's about ready to retire. I'm not sure. I mean, like, you, you live your life, live your life. This is a very stressful job. It is very stressful. Now, we don't know what happened to.
Councilman Henderson.
Henderson. But it just made me feel some kind of way. The woman was 60 or 61. I can't remember what they said. And I have to believe, because they said died of natural causes. You, you, you just don't die of natural causes, in my opinion. I'm not a doctor at 60, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
This is a very stressful, and it's a, and we're lit, we're in a stressful climate altogether anyway. Pressure coming at you everywhere.
Yep.
I take my hat off to these people who want to do that, because you have to have a certain type of temperament to do this. But, but you also need to now be young. It's time, I think, that these people need to pass the torch. When we look at the people that's in Congress in, in Washington, how do they get it in their mind that they don't, that they, nobody else could do this job? They freaking are dying in these seats. And it's messing up the people they're representing. It's messing up their district when they do that. You know, how many people died last year and this year in these seats in Washington? And everywhere, they just died.
Yeah, I think it is, it is time for a transition to, for us baby boomers, if you will, to hand the baton over to the next generation. And I say that from a federal standpoint, but I also say that from a local standpoint as well.
Sure.
But it says here in an article, Florida politics, despite being a Democrat, former Governor Rick Scott in 2015 appointed Tom Scott to the Florida Elections Commission. Scott is also the senior pastor of 34th Street Church of God. For those who are listening and may not know him, he holds an undergrad degree from the University of North Florida in Criminal Justice and Corrections. Candidates, there's some other things there. But he is a longtime family friend of ours. And we, my sister talks to him frequently about what's going on, what's happening, what, what have you. And just a good friend. But I think I agree with you on it's time to, to hand the baton over. I think he has a lot of support locally. He certainly has name recognition. But for me, I think moving to younger, more talented group right now is necessary, especially for the black community. We're gonna need that energy. I think when you've been in politics for a long time, you have ties and obligations that may not serve us well today. And putting somebody in there, new, but with experience, and experience, I think, is key. Um, and experience, I think, is key. Might be smart on our part.
Absolutely.
So, um, so I think we agree on Tom Scott um, and our debt we're not. Familiar with, but we kind of feel like we wanna keep this as close to home as possible.
I get, when you read her thing, because I didn't read upon her, and I I just put down, she will be someone. If it came down to my top person not in there, I. The next person from off the top of my head would have been Tom Scott because um. But only because I know him, but now that I did, and when you read that, and I know Jackie, um, is what we need. To go in and take over that seat for the last, I think, eighteen months, is someone understand policies and procedure.
And I did that.
Yeah, she does. Yeah, right. Symbolism anymore, because they'll say, oh, well, we need to be black. Well, it has been black. That we're in, so I don't really care if it's black. I want to see.
Very, very important distinction, because that's not necessarily the 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 conversation that is happening around this race. Um, that it's a black seat, so we wanna keep a black person in, but you're saying as black independents. We're less concerned about race. And we're more concerned about the agenda that that person holds and their competence.
Yes, I'm I'm not, right, I'm not concerned about party or race at this point. Now, if I had a qualified black person, of course. I want that, but I want a qua, I want someone who can get the job done. And that's what we have to start moving, moving forward.
Okay, um, okay, keep that list going. Um, let's talk about Ariel Amira Danley.
Is that? Is that Gwen's daughter?
Yeah, so I did find in that same article, uh, Florida Politics. Um, Ariel Amira Danley, daughter of the late Gwendolyn Henderson, is filed to run for her mother's seat. Da 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 da, Danley is the business development man manager for gardeners and English language book supplier. And with her mom, co-founded the Black English Bookstore, which elevates black art authors. She is also a political consultant, having worked to elect her mom in twenty twenty-three. And on former Senator Janet Cruz's unsuccessful twenty twenty-three Tampa City Council bid. Speaking at Henderson's memorial, um, Danley said her mom made hard work look easy and lamented. That there are so many things she won't get to finish on her own. Don't worry, mommy, she says, I'll finish your race too. Well, some people, go ahead.
Janet Cruz, um. Janet Cruz was running with her mother, so I don't know how much she worked on Janet Cruz um thing that just met. Can't, it could be true. Um, what I do know, I don't know much, I don't know anything about it. I saw, um, I did hear her um. Her speech at her mother's funeral, she speaks well, uh, I thought it was very nice. And I heard her um, this past Thursday at City Council's speech as well. But. I don't think she, for me, would be no. It would be more of.
And why would it, why would it be no?
I don't think she's qualified, and I think it would be more of a sympathy vote. Um, you 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 saw this going around when um, I can't remember who died in Texas, a black um. State representative and um, her daughter took her seat.
Was it Barbara Jordan?
Could be, yes. It's it's two of them like that, you know. Now, just because you're with your mom, I don't know if they live. I, I don't know if she lived together. To me, just no, not qualified to go in there and get the gr- get the job done right now.
It's kind of like um, if my mother were a doctor and she died and I says, you know what, I'm gonna go and take.
Because we've had these doctors um conversations when she come home or or like me, you know, if I die and.
That's a bit extreme, I understand, but.
I'm gonna go over and take over your customers, so you couldn't do that. But like when my mother died sick, I was able to move in, because I've been doing it, doing it, doing.
You were doing it with her, you were running that business with your mom.
So, yeah, so with her, you know, and I. You know, you you, in our.
It feels like the experience certainly isn't there, although she has um, in addition to the local races, I did not read this piece. But she also served as regional organizer for Kamala Harris in twenty twenty-four um, for the presidential campaign. She has a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Playwriting from Howard, and she is a certified makeup artist. So um, for her, we're saying no.
Why does she wanna do politics?
Because she wants to finish her mom's legacy.
She can finish her mom's legacy at the bookstore. Cause this isn't her mother's, this isn't her mother's legacy in politics, it's not her mother's legacy, she was only there for two years. Less than two years.
Well, she, not so much her mom's legacy, so maybe that was the wrong way. She just wants to finish what her mom started.
And her mom just started the bookstore.
Alright, alright, so we're gonna move on, because I think you are pretty clear on um, her. Um, let's go to Juana. Juana Colbert, is it?
I just met her.
I have never met her, I'm aware of her, I was aware of a show, a show, I didn't know anybody that was necessarily on the show. Um, she certainly presents well in terms of, okay, wow, looks like a real mover and shaker.
Impressive, um. Me too, I don't see in politics.
Okay, so when I looked her up, what came was uh Instagram. Yeah, uh, sort of Instagram kind of notations, yes, I'm running. Um, and. It wasn't enough information for me to really get who she was. Or where she's coming from, other than the fact that she was on the show and that she has decided to run.
Well, I got a little information.
He does wanna focus on Ebor. Um, she only mentioned it in terms of the District Five neighborhoods or areas. She did mention Ebor as an area that she wants to focus on, and her thing is real estate, which is good. But.
She's a realtor, so.
Okay, so that's, you know, that's that's her thing.
That's her thing.
Right.
She did say she sat on the um, she has or is sitting on the housing um. Board. So for me, I don't think, I don't, I I think if she was to get it, she'll be okay, but it. She wouldn't be able to, in my opinion, um, get in and hit the ground running. Um, by the time the second election comes around, she should have um, been called up, but we don't have time for that.
So for my question to a lot of them, and I hope um, if anybody's listening to this, it's it's um, my new question for everybody is why? You tell me something, it's like, why? Just just tell me why. I need to understand why you are saying that and why you think that makes sense. Or whatever the issue is. And for her, it is, why are you running? And.
The good lives that you, successful life that you were in, because you show no interest really into politics. This is a different game here. And my question would be, were you planning to run? In twenty twenty-eight, if this seat hadn't opened up, and if you say yes, then I'm okay. But if you only decided to run because the seat opened up, then you not prepared, you wasn't even thinking about it. So if you wasn't thinking about this, you know, that's a problem. And particularly if you have not been in the community, if you have not, if you're not prepared, you're not prepared.
Yeah, and and I I guess I'd also want to know who's surrounding you. Um, I think I saw a picture on Facebook, if you will, and um, it was on that Ben Bannaker. Um, that Ben Bannaker site, and she was with a couple of people who um. Maybe were Republican now, again.
We don't have a problem with that.
As independents, we don't have an issue with that. We don't necessarily have an issue with that, and you know, you know, and I'll talk about this later, but. Um, doesn't matter that you're Republican, my question is um, what, it's not so much what type of Republican you are, but.
I'm not dealing with a mega.
Before you run away with that, um, the issue was that uh, who she was. Who was surrounding her. And that's gonna be really important for East Tampa, the 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 neighborhood that we, the neighborhoods. Excuse me, that we care about. Um, is she going to take care of them in the way that? We think nobody has in the past, and I mean, even those who have sat in that seat in the past. The care that that those neighborhoods need has not been there. And is she the person that's gonna step in and step up for, because what she mentioned was Ebor? And rumor has it, rumor has it that she's been sort of steered or pushed. To go and and sit in that seat. And I wanna know who is, who is. Helping her or pushing her to run for this seat, if that's the case. I don't know that, but if that's the case. These are questions that I have, and certainly if I had an opportunity to ask, I would be asking those things.
Well, by all logic, you have to come to that conclusion that someone had suggested that she run for this seat. She's never shown any interest, we haven't really seen her to anything, so if she.
Someones that are.
So with the picture that's been shown, she's at an event. Now, when we're at events, we're taking pictures with everyone, right? So, I don't, I don't, I don't really.
You don't take pictures with everyone.
I don't, but she, but she at that time wouldn't know, because she's into real estate. So she's looking and she wants to get into development, so I could see her doing that, so I don't take anything, you know, big on that. Now, why I wouldn't want her. Um, and her qualification would be, um, she's a realtor, but she's not what East Tampa need. Is, and I don't know how that AMI worked, but when they say affordable housing, it's still not affordable apartments. They're still not affordable to the people who working at Walmart, to the people who, you know, making what, let's say thirty thousand. Um, uh, thirty thousand dollars or anything under forty thousand dollars, these people are still having a hard time. And I don't. Those was not her target people when she was as a realtor, you know.
That makes sense.
Of that, so I, I wouldn't put her being a realtor um, on the plus side for East Tampa. Now, we'll put that on the plus side for Ebor or anywhere else in District Five. But Dershow won't be on the plus side for Sephar Springs, progress, Summer Progress Village. Those people need something different. Now.
They do.
It would be nice if these people would know how, because as you are representing District Five, not just East Tampa. You have to be able to disciple and say, I, we've done this, we gotta focus on this. While we're also focusing on the rest.
You gotta be able to multitask, yeah.
And that has been. No one has been able to do that. And that's why when you get to my candidate, I'm gonna tell you, she's gonna be able to do it.
Alright, so uh, I'm not gonna get to your candidate next. I'm gonna get to Fran Tate, which I'm assuming is not your candidate.
I know Fran.
Alright, I know, I'm not a. Fran Tate said she is running a grassroots campaign and is a fresh voice for District Five. She wants to focus on public transit, housing and public art. Yay, Fran in East Tampa. She knows I love that. So uh, she's president of the Jackson Heights Neighborhood Association and coordinator of the Public Safety Crime Watch. She is also a former chairperson of the East Tampa Community Redevelopment Agency's Community Advisory Committee, that was long. Of which she remains a member. Um, Fran does the work. She's out there.
She's a great organizer, she's great on the ground. But do I think Fran have the temperament to sit on City Council? And and two, sometimes we could say, maybe time has passed you by. You've missed that. She, she should continue to sit on boards, continue to organize, organize, in my opinion. Sometimes City Council starts at nine and they are still there at eleven o'clock at night.
And you don't think she has the stamina for that?
I'm just saying, in my opinion, I don't know. I don't, I I know I don't, I be falling asleep just sitting still, you know. And we're, we're at a certain age and um. Just saying, why do you wanna do that? Why? She's never shown any interest that she wanted to run for office. She could have done this maybe five, six, seven years.
Yeah, sometimes people don't necessarily, I mean, especially those who are working in the community steadily, 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 and then an opportunity comes up. Where it's um, it's sort of a, a, well, in this case, a special election. And it's, 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 it just, you just decide, you know what, I'm gonna run. Because she does the work already, that's all I'm saying to you. So. It it's not like some of the younger ones that we've talked about already, who were doing other things, living their lives, what have you, and all of a sudden pivot. She's not necessarily pivoting, she is expanding more so than anything else. Now, I agree with you that Fran would not be the person that I think needs to be in this seat for such a time as this. But um, I would say that it makes sense for her to decide to run, and maybe the temperament is not right. Because we're looking for someone with a certain temperament and experience level and all of those things that can go toe to toe. With competition for the resources. I think we're looking for somebody who can compete for the limited resources that are out there. And it seems that East Tampa and District Five generally, Progress Village, Lincoln Gardens, what have you. Have been on the losing end. We're looking for a fighter.
There you go, I was just gonna say that. I'm looking for a fighter. Now, I don't see Fran as a fighter, but you know, I've, um, and I've known Fran since um. We used to do phone banking since Obama time.
Fran's a great, great person.
She's a great, she's a great, great individual.
I I love Fran.
And if she gets in this dog race, it would change her whole personality. It would change, it would change her who she is, Julie is. And do she know policy, policy reading, doing the research? This job require, and and who knew? I I I'm really just finding out, particularly how this works. Through Orlando, right? Because I could notice um, a couple of times with um, Councilwoman um Henderson. And she's on that diet, sometimes I could tell she have not fully understood the agenda of what she's talking about at the time. We need someone who's gonna dig in there, like, you know who do research really well on that council and wrote Lynn Hurt.
And those are the two names that I hear a lot that come from.
You could tell that they know what they're talking about. And see, like Lynn Hurt, she has been, it, like if Stephanie Corner was to run. She knows the process. She, she's been doing that. Same thing with um, with with Lynn. And this is why they're able to run circles around our seat and our. and our person that's in the seat, because they don't understand the, the, the policy, the process. Language.
And that what you just said is the critical piece. You do not want the other council members to be able to run circles around.
We have to be able to push back. And not only that, you have to be able to get these people to vote, because no matter what.
I'm gonna give you a real pushback person. So Elvis Piggott. Elvis Piggott said one of his priorities as a candidate for Tampa City Council is ensuring residents have a voice in government. Hey, that's what we say. So Elvis said he wants to ensure important issues affecting all residents in District Five, not just those living in certain areas, aren't overlooked, while also carrying on the work of Henderson, that Henderson started. Piggott has been a pastor in the district for nearly twenty years. He's a pastor at Triumph Church in Tampa and said he wants to prioritize community voice and economic opportunity, particularly for young people. He said he also wants to encourage development that's beneficial to residents. Now Elvis has, um, I think he was described in another article I read as a perennial. That's my dog. A perennial candidate, which means that he's out there running a lot. He's out there running a lot. Yeah, he's out there running a lot for different races. But um, he's definitely a boots on the ground, ground person that's out there a lot with a very, very consistent voice.
Yes. So you know, Elvis is a good friend of mine. I've known Elvis since he first was running, I think for school board. I, I met him in twenty, probably sixteen, when he first was running. So as I'm not supporting him in this particular race, I have supported Elvis in um, all of his races, but I, I'm not supporting him in this one.
You are consistent. Um, I haven't supported Elvis in all of his races, but I certainly uh, supported him in his first. I think he was, I think it was county commissioner.
County commissioner or school board?
I don't think it was school board. I think it was a, a different, a bigger race than that. He did something, um, one time somebody thought I hit their car or something and he came out of his church, because I was there for a meeting, came out of his church and pretty much told that cop to, to take a, take a hike. That I told him I didn't do it. Then he needed to believe that and move on. And then he told me, Elvis told me, and just go, just go on, just you, you fine, just go. And I went. Huh? Yeah, because, because it was kind of like obvious that I didn't and it was obvious to anybody. And Elvis just came and said, this is nonsense. And I was so impressed with that. Just totally impressed with.
He's a very, very nice young man, but I think moving forward, I'm not gonna support any pastors.
Hmm, and now that's interesting, but I was so impressed with that, that I went home, told my family and the whole family voted for him. Um, and then I stopped voting for him when I guess he was working on the uh, mayoral campaign and, and sort of attacked me on a couple. I'm like, hey, we're friends. What, what's up with that? Yes, I am looking at somebody else, but we're still friends. This, this public attack makes no sense to me.
Is, is us, black people. And we're fighting, we would kill a sister or brother for some white person. Give a shit about us once they get in office. Particularly weird, yeah.
It, it was weird and I don't think I was able to recover. I have been able to recover since. Um, but you know, I'm, I'm polite and whatever else, but I think Elvis has a lot of passion.
He does.
Uh, but I want to get to your point that I kind of went and interrupted of, I'm not voting for a pastor. Now, can you elaborate on that? You.
How can any pastor be in politics? And I, and I'm just getting this way, when particularly because of the um, these national Christians, um, real heart sense Christians. None of them, if they, if they're in politics, live by the Bible. That you have to do. And, and you get up there on those, in those pulpits and say this stuff and you live in a, a, a different life. Now, I don't go to church. I, I, I don't, I don't do, I don't, but if you say you're a Christian, then you couldn't make the decisions you make, no matter what. If you say you following your God, that, that Bible is saying, and I know the Bible, like I've read that Bible and I can break it down and, and it's probably why I just push back from it. You're living, you're living and you're doing two different things. That's, that's just, and that's with all of them. Why you're not gonna vote for a pastor?
Well, I'm not saying that I'm not going to vote for a pastor, but I think I um, my, my tendency is not to. Um, and I have voted for a pastor in the past, because of course I've voted for Thomas Scott.
Every election, every election. And I was supporting him for mayor. And like I said, I, I voted for um, um, Elvis. And, you know.
But going forward, you've decided that there really is a conflict of interest, it sounds like. And I could agree with that. I could agree with that, but um, I, I'm trying to think, would I vote for a pastor who's running for president? Probably not. Because of that obvious conflict. So why would I vote for a pastor? Well, let me finish my point, but why would I do that for someone who's voting, who's running for mayor or council seat or commissioner? Um, there has to be a conflict there somewhere. So, so yeah. So I, I think your argument is on point, so I'm gonna.
When these pastors aren't out here fighting for the homeless, although Elvis does, and I, and I. When I talk about Elvis, I'm talking about what I know. Elvis do fight for the undeserved, for the, um, thing. I don't see any of these pastors doing, doing what they preach on Sunday. I don't, I don't see that. And then they're going there and vote against it. We got a housing crisis. We got all, we got a lot of stuff going on in, not in just our district.
I'm gonna go through about three of them real fast, because these are names that we don't know. And then I want to get to that person that I think you've been itching to talk about for a little while, for quite a bit. So um, Thomas DeGeorge, um, he's a white guy. And um, for those who are like, why does she have to say somebody's a white guy or a black guy? I don't have to say black, because that's generally who I talk about. But um, I remember reading, somebody says, you know, black people are always calling, uh, talking about race. They put race in everything. And so I usually like to reply that everything is about race. Everything that happens in this country is about race. And we can't allow other people to make us think otherwise or be afraid to call it out when we see it. So the fact that he is white is a part of how he will make decisions. And, or black is a part of how he or she will make decisions. So I, 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 I really want to sort of qualify that, that it has nothing to do with whether I would vote for him or not based on that. It has to do with
Just who he is.
Background, right, his background. What, and what influences his decision making? So.
Let me say a little about him. I don't know him, but I've been hearing a lot of good things about it.
Can you say that after I read what's? In Ebor City, Thomas George is the co-owner and president of The Crow Bar, a live music and events venue. He's chaired the Ebor City Chamber of Commerce and helped raise money in a national campaign to support independent venues during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The George said the city needs rent protection amid rapid development and right, a rising cost of living. He also said the city needs to address homelessness and mental health issues. What, 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 what do you know about Mr. George?
You just, I, I was just gonna say just that. So I would say no for him, but um, apparently he's a good guy. Uh, for those who know it, in the Ebor Entertainment, he will fight for that. He knows how to fight for that particular thing. But could he go on city council and be ready for procedures and policies? All of the issues. And it's, I would have to give him a note. But from what I'm hearing and everybody who's have spoke of it, loving, he's a nice guy, okay? But nice just can't cut it. Because um, and, and he wants to fight to survive his livelihood and those surrounding Ebor City. He wants to fight for homeless and that's good, but it, it's, it's a hell of a lot more that needs to be done.
Yeah, it says Tom is a business owner and resident in Ebor City. He said he wants to use his personal experience interacting with the government on Tampa's city council. So um, I don't know him. Um, he is a no for me just for the fact that um, I don't, and I agree with you on. I, I love his passion about Ebor, but I'd like it to, and business, but I'd like it to be about um, and I guess the homelessness, yeah.
And I would suggest that if he wants to get into um, politics and all of that, he need to sit on the Ebor City um, CRA and figure out how that stuff works.
All right, so Melanie Letitia Williams um, is a retired lieutenant colonel and Tampa native. She ran an unsuccessful campaign last year for Hillsborough Clerk of the Court and Comptroller. Williams did not respond to emails or seeking comment. Melanie is among more than ten candidates running. So very little information on Melanie. I don't know Melanie.
I don't know Melanie and I don't even recall saying her name on the thing. Melanie, she black or white?
She's black. I don't either. So I'm gonna go to little Miss Naya. And I hate that I said little Miss Naya. Take that back. She is young, but I don't want to diminish her, um, you know, her run. So Naya, Naya Al, Al, Almez Young. Naya Almez Young has worked in public service for years. She said she would spend summers at her grandmother's house canvassing around the neighborhood, encouraging people to vote and attending neighborhood civic association meetings. Naya Young said her background as a grassroots advocate have prepared her for this campaign. Uh, Young said she wants to focus on youth opportunities and neighborhood economic growth. I almost think she should join Florida Rising.
Yes, and, and I was gonna say, Naya, no, you have not. It is, it, it is the same thing if my daughter was to say, she says, oh, mom, I remember when I used to go to Bob Buckhorn and help um, send out mailers. She was with my mother. Do the, do the um, things. She has been with us um, with Obama. But, or you just turn up and say, I'm gonna run for city council? You gotta get on some boards. You gotta be the president of your neighborhood, um, neighborhood association, you gotta do some things. But I do like the curse that she's willing to do it. I don't like when they say she shouldn't do it. I don't, I, I.
I think she should. And she says she should start getting her um, bona fide in terms of experience. I think it will be a great experience for her for the next time. And it will teach her, she will learn what's important. And uh, begin working and focusing on that. So when I said earlier, I think she should join Florida Rising. Really join an organization, it could be any organization, and really start understanding what the issues are. Um, she comes from a very um, active family in terms of community, um, Lena Young. And um, her, her father being with the school district, um, at a very high level. She's, she's a pretty, she comes from an awesome family is what I'm gonna say. But run, Naya, run. And get that experience. And um, we will see you in a few years for what you decide you're going to do, run for next. So.
And you know what? I, I agree. Any young person who wants to get in an organization out of all of them, say the Black Caucus, even the Democratic or the NAACP, Florida Rising by four is the most um, action, you know? Involved, more constantly doing things.
Where you're also learning. You're also learning, not just at a local level, but at a state level.
And you could learn, yes, and you could get in positions. Um, yeah, I didn't think of that. Yeah, that's the point.
All right, so Darrell Ashley Dudney, business owner Darrell Ashley Dudney, who goes by Ash, is making his first foray into politics to represent the district where he grew up. He said he's interested in supporting small businesses, ones that make under a million annually, addressing homelessness and boosting public transportation. Now, he is a white guy. He's standing here with a football in his hand, looking really cool. Um, but it's one, it's a no for me for experience.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, it doesn't sound, um, yeah, it would, it would probably be a no for me on, on him.
Yeah, and I think I have gotten everyone but one person. Let me just make sure. So I'm gonna go with somebody who I'm gonna give you the floor on just a second. Just let me, why don't I see her here? That's kind of interesting. Okay, so uh, last person is Allison Hewitt. This is a, this, this position is um, has nothing to do with party affiliation necessarily. Um, but everybody understands that the party kind of gives you an indication of um, where that person's votes will lean. And um, so it becomes important, although uh, party affiliation is not something attached to this, this, this um, this seat. So Allison Hewitt is the president, CEO of Allison Hewitt and Associates. I had to pull her information from somewhere different, because I think she got in last. So she wasn't in the same group of uh, in from, same article that I was looking at.
Supporting um, Orlando Goose. And so when he dropped out, she was on second shift.
Yeah, okay. So Allison, uh, the president and CEO of her own uh, a company is a hands-on community development leader that possesses a wealth of practical biz, business experience and a fresh vision for individuals interested in developing and growing their own businesses and bringing meaningful change to communities. Ms. Hewitt is responsible for retaining and recruiting businesses to help expand a community's business climate and increase investments in local neighborhoods. She has worked on large-scale developments, has experience in public funding projects, including grants, and knows how to partner with the private sector to get projects done. Ms. Hewitt has over twenty years of successful economic development and community affairs management experience, including as the executive director for the state of Florida's Office of Urban Opportunity in Tallahassee, Florida. Hewitt implemented business assistance programs to over two hundred businesses, marketing, branding, strategies, public outreach and surveys. Marketing, branding, strategies, public outreach and surveys. And other strategic plan activities. Okay, I'm gonna stop that and ask you. Tell me some thoughts on on Ms. Allison Hewitt.
Well, I was gonna say, just by her resume alone, nothing more needs to be said. We know that. By that resume, Allison is ready on day one.
You think that she will be ready on day one?
She is the only person, I believe.
Who knows Allison? Nobody knows Allison.
Well, Allison was, is more like a behind the um, scene. She write policies, she read policies, um, people know Allison.
Okay, but your average voter out there will not know Allison. I am aware of.
And this is why, yeah, we have to put her out there. What what I'm saying is, when we vote for people. Who we, we know are they're part of um, certain groups. Uh, like the white guy for Eboard, those people will vote for him because of that, which. They don't really understand by doing it, voting for our plans or voting for people we know. Has really hurt District Five, stood again the most qualified person. It's not taking away from anybody who's running, but to get the most qualified, who will be. Now, we can't say that, um, she can't be compromised. We hope, we like to believe that she will not be compromised, okay? But um, to get, all I do know, that she is ready. When they um, swear her in the very next week. When she hit the dice, she's gonna talk like she's been sitting there. When that, when that agenda comes out on Friday, I think the agenda comes out. For the next week, every Friday of Monday, I don't know when it comes out, but the agenda is so long. So you got to be able to be focused. On reading and studying, doing your research when you get ready for um.
And and that's what she's gonna do, and I.
She's gonna understand it, she's gonna be able to pick it apart, and she's gonna be able to ask questions. And she's gonna say, hey, community, this isn't good for us. Or hey, community, this is good for us and here's why. And that is how we have to move forward. We can't expect. These, these people, these young people, or half of these people to get up there and do that. It's just not gonna happen.
I agree with you. Um, I think that in terms of being most qualified, she's very qualified. I think Tom Scott is also very qualified, but now what we need more so than just being qualified. Is um, the ability to, um, both will hit the ground running. Would you agree with that? What is it that she's bringing more so that we need right now than perhaps he is? Because both are qualified, both will hit the ground running, but what is it about what Allison Hewitt will do? That gives you some comfort to say, she's my person.
New perspective, um, being that she has written policies for. Different entities, being that she has worked for the government. I think.
She's worked for the governor, government, you said?
Government, yes.
Okay.
In, in, in his office. The um, I think her qualification um, definitely supersedes um. Scott.
Okay.
Okay, I think her qualification and the first lady you wrote, you read. Um, who worked for Jackie.
Um, Odette.
Odette, there's about this, you know.
So you've got people who have experience beyond local, but these are folks who are policy wonks, if you will.
And that's what I'm looking for, that Tom Scott, yes, he has the experience at sitting at these tables or sitting on city council. Over that, I won't say that, because I think. As long as they've been in office, and I know what he has done, um, he started the um. I don't know if he started it, but he was a part of doing the CRA, but there's certain things when these people was there, like closing down. Um, I four, getting off on, on Thirty Fourth Street. On these things, and and it destroyed our family, our, our communities, closing us in, not bringing us to the table, not asking for input. Um, being maybe convinced by F dot that this should happen. Regardless rather what we wanted or don't want, um, those kind of things, and so. A lot of things just happened under them, and I don't know if it was intentional or. They didn't know how to uh, really understand it.
Okay, so Allison Hewitt. Um, which most people do not get, do not know, but I would really encourage you to get to know her. Um, she is, um, from our perspective, and I'm gonna agree with you on this one, Mona. She is one that we should pay attention to in this race. Um, if you aren't interested in the flash, but you're interested in someone who's doing the real work. Um, she will do the real work. Now, she does live in uh, East Tampa as well. Uh, has lived, lived there for, I don't know, over twenty, maybe thirty years.
No, she's, she's born in East Tampa.
The Hewitts off of MLK.
Yeah, her mother, father.
I remember that beautiful house that had the window. That's who that is.
Yes. The clever part of, listen, Allison is a homegrown East Tampa.
The most beautiful house at the time.
Yes.
The most beautiful house in East Tampa to me that was so unusual and so modern for the times. And I always wondered who lived there, and then later I find out that's where Allison Hewitt used to live, and it's like, oh my god.
Yes, her mother, you know.
She's a rat. I think she's a rattler.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, she's, she's rooted, people know her, she's homegrown, um, and she's committed to. East Tampa, but not only East Tampa, she's committed to District Five, because look, when we have family coming in town. I love taking them downtown. Uh, I, I, everybody wants to go down, um, downtown, Chelmsford. All of our, what is going on, because in the eighties, by the time we got going, it was nothing, we had nothing. So yes, we like the progress that the city is going in, we just don't like being left behind. So.
Because she has had a state purview, she has had responsibility that caused her to look at from a statewide level. It will be nothing for her to look at District Five and look at and and be sure that all the neighborhoods.
All the state. Are are benefiting, and that is all that we're seeing. Why, how we have not held these previous and present mayors. Accountable is unbelievable to me. Even these people who sit in on city council, they, the mayor just did the budget. East Tampa was nowhere in there but Pharaoh's. We gonna have to pay out of our ass for the next twenty years, because we got, finally got something Pharaoh's. In the last thirty years, nothing has happened in East Tampa, but they don't give me Pharaoh's, so you're not gonna get, no. But every neighborhood needs to be getting a percentage of that budget. And making sure something new is happening in our areas as well. District Five. Just was not in a budget. District Five might have been in the budget, yeah, old District Five was in the budget, because downtown, all of that was in the budget. But East Tampa, South of Springs, not in the budget. And I'm, and I'm saying, I'm on a fighter to say, listen, we're gonna push back on that. I gotta give my, my East Tampa something.
That's true. I think what, you know, in terms of uh, recreational things, you know, you guys, I get it, I get it. Um, I, even Progress Village got this little water park thing, you know, they got something recently. We, we need to also focus on um, our business districts. We, we need to focus on Twenty Second. Could be a great extension coming out of Ebor, connecting it to Hillsborough with vibrant businesses. And I'm, I'm like, why isn't anybody doing anything about the eyesore on Twenty Second? So, when we talk about um, our neighborhoods, we need to talk about the economic development as well. We don't have it necessarily.
And that's where, okay, so Tom Scott said he did the CRA. And CRAs have been in for twenty years, and East Tampa is the, the first. Every CRA areas are progressive, but East Tampa, you have to ask yourself why? Why? They keep changing the policy, why?
There's that question, why?
When you was there, the first thing you should have said, we will make Twenty Second like Central used to be. That's ob like, um, hub, like, like Main Street. You see how they're really changing Main Street. Now, I don't know why, we, we do have. Um, thoughts on why, but we need a fighter, because he, he just left the job undone. Um, when they first came in, they were doing stuff that I believe that the city should have been doing, not the CRA. Started the CRAs and then they didn't want to give any more money to the district, but nobody pushed back against that.
Okay.
That's why I say we need, we need fresh eyes and we need someone. And who's gonna understand.
We need policy wonks. So you mentioned, um, you mentioned Bill Cars- Carlson. And you also mentioned Lynn Hertec. I think that, um, you know. And I'm, I'm not sold necessarily on Ms. Hewitt at this point. Although it may sound like it, I do have a major question that I still have to ask her, but. It sounds like she would fit in that circle.
Sure.
They could build a coalition of, um, oh my god, that, that could be really major. And I think we need to be thinking about the current makeup of the council. And who we need to add to that council, so that in, when, when decisions are being made. You know that you've got at least three people, three people who will likely align. In supporting whatever your issues are.
And I forgot to say Alan Plundin, um, the chair, he knows his, his, his stuff too. You could tell, I, I, you could just see that they understand what they're talking about. They're able to question the presenter, um, pushing deeper, getting what we're thinking at home. Cause I'm saying, hey, that doesn't sound right, and I can always count on one of them getting to. Now, they don't, of course, I, I, you don't wanna basher the presenter, but half the time they're bullshitting them anyway. So, yeah, so what I do know.